Good evening, and welcome to the Town of Dudley Planning Board for Wednesday, April 24th, 2024. Present this evening, we have Thomas Chinaki Clerk, Richard Clark Member, David Durgan Member, William Scanlon Acting Town Planner, myself Guy Horn, and we have Mr. Edmison who is not going to be able to make the meeting tonight. So we have four members. First item on our agenda, a note that the Planning Board meeting is being recorded. And second is Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited and justice for all.
Okay. We have a public hearing on proposed zoning bylaw amendments for shared driveways. The first thing on our agenda for 7:00 PM.
Public hearing notice is under new business?
It's under new business. Okay. Read the public hearing notice. Notice of Public Hearing, Dudley Planning Board, Proposed Zoning Amendment Pursuit and Amass General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 5, The Dudley Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, April 24th, 2024 at 7:00 PM in the Dudley Municipal Complex, Room 321A, 71 West Main Street, Dudley, Mass. on a proposed zoning amendment. To amend the Dudley zoning bylaw, Section 7.01 driveway slash curb cut permit subsection, oh, I'm not great on Roman numerals, so is this 4, 4?
Dot F.
Dot F, by adding design standards for the construction of shared driveways and a change to special permit granting authority when two, when more than two houses will use the same driveway from zoning board of appeals to the planning board. The proposed amendment is on the town website and on file in the offices of the Planning Board and Town Clerk, 71 West Main Street, Dudley, Mass. during the hours of 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Monday through Thursday, and 8:00 AM to noon on Fridays. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on zoning amendments should appear at the time and place designated. Guy Horn Chairman, Dudley Planning Board, this ran April 5th and April 12th.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we'll open the public hearing. And...
Yeah, we did receive one letter.
Okay.
Joan Gardeki, if you'd like to read that into the record.
So we have a letter here, it's dated April 19th, 2024, to the Planning Board members, from Joan Gardeki, 17 Point View Terrace, Dudley, Mass., warrant article number 12. Since I will be away when the Planning Board public hearing is held, I have a question regarding Article 12 on town warrant for May 20th, 2024. I would like to know if the new driveway slash curb cut permits for shared driveway, driveways eliminates the porch, pork chop law for private roads. Hopefully you can answer my question at the public hearing. Thank you in advance, Joan Gardeki. So I think what is meant by pork chop law would be interior lots.
Yes.
And I can't, I can't see how this would affect the interior lots unless you had multiple interior lots that were abutting and you wanted to just put in one driveway through one of those lots to gain access to the two lots. But if they wanted to have access to more than two lots through one of the lots, they would have to currently go to the ZBA and get a variance for that, wouldn't they?
Well, the shared driveway standards that we're proposing really doesn't affect the interior lot provisions. That will still stay in place and will still be available if, to homeowners or landowners who meet the standards of that section of the bylaw.
Right.
So some of, it's possible that interior lots would get their access off of a common driveway. So they may have to build the driveways to these standards where they don't have to today, but they can still do the interior lots in the same manner that they can, can today.
I'm thinking about the gentleman that came to us with, I think it was five lots.
Yes.
In West Dudley off of Route 131, like Corbin, Corbin Road, not Corbin Road, um, Cordis Road area over there. I think if I remember right, that was five, five lots?
Yes.
And he brought it to us and we proposed that he have two driveways, two common driveways to utilize for those, for those four lots. Well, it was four lots plus an existing house on a lot. And then we, that's what we approved and then he went to the ZBA and was able to get an approval to use one driveway for all five lots.
So you could still do that today, you just have to build the driveway according to these standards.
Right, that would be the only difference that we're proposing.
Even if you use frontage on a private lot, don't we need to, on a private road?
Say it again.
You use a frontage on a private road, don't you need a private road owner's permission?
Well, this, you know, the standards that we're proposing prohibit the use of common driveways as frontage. So you still have to have frontage on a public way.
What if it's a private way?
Yeah, that's, I think that's what the guy was asking.
I can clarify it, if you want to hear the clarification. Steve Wetruba, Dudley's ZBA. So to answer Mrs. Gardeki's question, so interior lots, you require 50 feet of frontage on a public way. That is why in the Pondview Terrace situation, which I'm pretty sure that's what she's referencing because that's her address, it was not allowed there because that large parcel was subdivided into two flag lots. But at the time, for some reason, somebody didn't realize that, that end of Pondview was never accepted. Pondview's in a unique situation in town where the first part of it was accepted, it was public way. Second part of it was not accepted, so it remains a private way. And that part was where the 50 feet of frontage was for those flag lots. And the problem was that the regulations say it has to be 50 feet on a public way or accepted way. So that's the situation there. The other thing that sometimes we lose sight of is, like for instance, the one with the five lots on one common driveway. Each one of those five lots still has the minimum required frontage somewhere else. So you still have to have it. So it's not like, just because you want to put up a common driveway, you can't put a common driveway in on a 50-foot wide little strip and have it go back and serve two lots back there because you've got to have 50 feet of frontage for each interior lot and a minimum of five acres per lot. You'd have to have 10 acres back there and 100 feet of frontage to have the two, even if you wanted to do a common driveway. So, I don't know if that clarifies it, but it does, the, the common driveway rules do not allow you to get around the requirements for frontage for the lot. You're still going to have the frontage somewhere. All that the common driveway, the purpose of the common driveway is for the situation where you have frontage, but for some remarkable reason, whether it be wetlands or ledge or just topography, that you can't use that for the access for the driveway to the lot. It's a way to put the driveway somewhere other than the legal frontage for that lot, if that makes sense.
Or if you're a developer building two lots side by side and you don't want to have the expense of building two driveways.
But I think there's something in the rules that say you can't just do it just because you want to save money, that it's got to be some sort of a hardship and it can't be a financial hardship, if my understanding.
There's nothing in the, there's nothing in the, in the common driveway bylaw that says that it has to be a hardship.
Well, it's interesting, it's like, we, we had this discussion, Mr. Chairman, about how at some point you're just, it's a glorified way to get around subdivision rules and regulations, which is exactly why when I was on the ZBA and this came before us about the five lots on one common driveway, I was like, well, wait a minute, this is not what the Planning Board probably envisioned when they originally granted the A and R for that. So I wanted to bounce it back to you guys for comment and, and we did, and it went back and forth. But in the end, because of the way the rules are written in town, you guys kind of batted it back to us and said, actually, it's your, it's, it's up to you guys what you want to do, which is...
Right, because we, we approved what we could, what we had jurisdiction over, which was two lots per driveway. And that's all we had the jurisdiction over, so that's what we approved.
Right, right. But that's why, one of the reasons I came tonight was because I'm only one member of the ZBA, so I can't speak for the whole ZBA. And we were not able to meet, we don't meet again until after this meeting. So we weren't able to discuss how the whole board felt about shifting the responsibility of making those decisions on common driveways of more than two lots to the Planning Board. But I would say personally, myself, I'm all for it, just because of the situation that happened with that five lot, um, five lots on one common driveway situation. I really felt that kind of went above and beyond. So, in, in my personal opinion is, I definitely think the change of putting that under the jurisdiction of the Planning Board, because you gentlemen, the Planning Board, are the ones who create those A and Rs in the first place. So it's all the more reason why you should be able to regulate how the driveways on those A and Rs are, are treated. As opposed to you create an A and R, you approve the A and R, and then they kind of say, oh, well, now we want to do something different. Oh, great, we'll go to another board and get the board to sign off on doing a very unique driveway situation.
So my, my opinion of it would be that, in essence, it would basically help the, the property owners if they only had to go to the one board versus go to both boards.
Right, this last case here, in the end, we ended up approving it anyways, but it, it did kind of get bat, batted back and forth. And I'll, I'll take, I'll take blame for that. I'm the one who stood up and said, hey, I don't, I don't feel comfortable voting for this when it first came before us until the Planning Board sees it.
Right.
In the end, I guess, you know, we ended up doing the same, although that did work out because it did give them time to listen to some of the, you guys were able to hear from the abutters and their concerns, and we also heard from the abutters and their concerns. And they are changing the design so that the driveway doesn't come in at such a, such a sharp angle. And they made some improvements, or, or my understanding is they're going to be making some improvements. So, all right, that's all I had.
Okay, thank you.
Well, that's not true either, I probably will have something else, but...
Mr. Brier.
John Brier, Flaxfield Road, guys. First, you know, I, I know you guys have a difficult job. I wanted to come here rather than on the town meeting floor and talk about this because I know at the last town meeting, you know, there was kind of the debate on the floor over this. The whole shared driveway and the flag lots came about when we finished the master plan in 2000. All right, one, one of the issues was people wanted to preserve the rural character of town. And the problem was all the development that was being done was just along the road frontage. So you had this, basically you had the, all the roads lined by homes and a lot of dead land behind that. And so we introduced the flag lot provisions, right? And the whole idea of a shared driveway was anticipating mother-in-law or a mother-type of homes as people got older, where someone might build a residence and then decide that they want to build another residence for, to take care of their elderly parents or, or somebody else, another family member. And so when we wrote the bylaw, we said it was only for two homes. We figured it was good for like a duplex, you know, someone was going to put a single town home up there, right? Technically two residences. And so we thought we had limited it pretty good to two. Now, having been on the planning board, like you guys, half the time you're trying to catch up with very smart attorneys and real estate developers that try to find every angle to beat your bylaws. And that's what happened with the old Southbridge Road there. I mean, that should never have been granted. My concern with your, your current proposal here is it's, for the original intent of the shared driveway, this is overkill. I mean, 50 foot of asphalt, you know, 20 foot width, you know, you have appropriate landscaping along the sides. And, and my concern is that it's a private drive, and if you go back to the original intent of why it was passed, it's not, it's not needed. The only thing that you need on a shared driveway is the same, and it's subject to the same regs as any other driveway cut, is the asphalt, the apron, as it goes into the street to make sure that you don't have the runoff and stuff like that. So they're subject to the same rules. But I understand now why you did this because of that five A and R lots. It never should have been approved. You had the right intention, which was two drives, four lots, that's all you can get. But again, right, lawyers and developers, they're, they're going to try to do what they do and, and beat the system. It was never the intent for a developer to use a shared driveway bylaw to circumvent the subdivision rules and regs. And that's what, exactly what this fellow is doing. He's, he's subverting the system. So my, what I would like to see is you can make the decision where you simply prohibit any, any shared driveway over two homes. Just prohibit it. Three or more, not allowed, period. No variance, no special permit, just don't allow it. If that's not an option, I have no problem if you incorporate this as long as you exempt the original intent, the, the first two homes. Because there's no reason why you need a 50-foot, four-inch, what if someone wants a dirt road off their apron? You know, a mother, you know, mother-in-law, father-in-law, you know, the original setup of this. You're adding about $7,500 to $10,000 cost to do a 50-foot, right, 1,000 square foot of pavement. And what's that running, you know, five to, you know, $7 a square foot? That's not required today, only 15 foot is required today, you know, for, for aprons. So what I'm asking is, I would like you to exempt, I, I think, so for a compromise, I said, one driveway can only be used by two individual house lots when approved by a special permit issued by the ZBA. Such care, maintenance, repair, replacement of the shared driveway must be incorporated into the deed of both houses. Any new request for three or more house lots to share a common drive shall be subject to the Dudley Rules and Regs regarding the subdivision of land and road standards. Any existing shared driveways that service three or more house lots will be subject to the following conditions, then you can put yours. So basically, you exempt the first two from this proposal. So that if someone does have a piece of land and they want to give it to their kids and have their house on one side and their kid's house on the other, or a simple townhouse with two people, you don't have, have to go through this. The engineering expense, the blacktop expense, the delays, it's just not needed. Any questions or?
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Good.
I appreciate the gentleman's bringing us up to date with regards to the master plan. As you noted, the master plan is dated 2020, 2000.
2000.
2000, right. Makes it 24 years old. And much of the census data in there actually dates back to the 1990 census.
Yep.
Which is in excess of 30 years, which is a town of what, 8,000 approximately, now approaching 12?
Yep.
The circumstances have changed. And as you've suggested, there are people who are willing to take advantage of and profit by getting around, if you will, creating what I've characterized as a cheap street, basically what it is. You know, and the question that was raised when this first issue came up in terms of the five is, and I raised the question is, why stop at five? Why not 10, why not 20? I mean, where's the end? And Mr. Wetruba used the word end. And I'm glad that you have proposed an end because I think that is somewhat reasonable. And maybe we can make some modifications to this. I think we do need to get this thing cobbled together such that it is acceptable. It did pass a town meeting in terms of a majority, where it failed was in the supermajority that was required. So we don't need a whole lot more in terms of votes to get this thing through. But again, I think we're leaving people open to this, again, cheap street concept, circumventing the bylaws, uh, the subdivision rules and regulations and trying to take advantage of something that was never there for them to take advantage of or not intended to be there for them to take advantage of.
So, so what would be the harm in actually just capping it at two max on a shared driveway? And not even allowing the possibility of three or more?
I, you know, you mentioned the mother-in-law thing, the nuclear family, you know, we're talking back to 2000, I think, again, in terms of the nuclear family, because that, that's kind of a thing in the rearview mirror at this point for most people. Most folks are looking to escape from or avoid their in-laws as opposed to buddy up with them in terms of sharing driveways. An interesting concept, but I think it's somewhat dated. Uh, so that, the thought in terms of the children, the, you know, difficulty, especially today with the high cost of housing, someone giving their child, if you will, or their offspring, an opportunity to get an, a foot in the door as far as real estate is concerned and establish a residence in town, I think is, is commendable. But I think the mother-in-law is in the...
Well, I, I use that as an example, I mean, you, you could look at a simple duplex, you know, a town home, you know...
All due respect to family relationships, they're inclusive, certainly, at least I would hope they still are.
So, what I was just going to say, Mr. Brier was, in reading this, we're not, we're not saying that they have to pave the entire driveway. We're just saying it has to be four.
50 feet.
50 feet.
Yep, 20 foot wide.
No, 16 feet wide.
All right, so you're at...
Minimum travel, 16 feet.
All right, so go 50 times, you know...
So when we, and when we say 20-foot landscaped, what we're saying is we want, like, if they're, if they're cutting this, this driveway through the woods, the brush or the, or the trees have to be cleared a minimum of 20 feet wide and you're going to have your driveway inside of that, 16 feet wide. So that gives you basically two feet on either side of this driveway so that things aren't growing into the, into the driveway where people are supposed to be traveling.
Again, but it's a private driveway.
But it doesn't have to, it, it doesn't have to be landscaped, it's not like we're telling them to put a private...
Well, it says appropriate landscaping.
Appropriate landscaping is that it's gravel or...
Appropriate to whom? Who the inspector is at the time?
He's the interpreter of the bylaw.
You see what I'm saying, but, but at the end of the day, right, when, when my driveway today comes off the road, it's my driveway. I have the say as the property owner of how it looks and what I put on it and, and how I want to do it. And that's how a shared driveway has been when it was servicing two homes. I understand, you, you have a situation where, again, a developer has brought this to the head and that's why you're trying to get in front of it right now. So shut the developer off, cut them off at the knees and just simply say, from this point forward, no flag, no, no shared driveways can be used for three or more residences. Just pull it as an option.
Well, I think it's two, right, it's too narrow.
Even, even for the, even for the ones that are used with two houses, if you have two houses today with, with, you know, the average family probably has four to five cars. So you're talking about a driveway that's going to get used between probably eight to 10 cars a day plus whatever Amazon or UPS trucks are going up and down it to, to service those two households. I mean, it has to be better than what our current driveway standard is. I think our current driveway standard says it should be 12 feet wide, 10 to 12 feet wide.
And, and what's wrong with that?
You get a FedEx truck and you don't have 12 feet anymore. You know, I mean, look at the size of these things. And again, back in 2000, year 2000, where was Amazon? Where was FedEx? Where was UPS? I mean, these things were down the road, if you will, decades, if you will. Now they're here, not only here, they're everywhere.
So you start with expanding the shared driveways to 20 feet and then all of a sudden now residences need 20-foot driveways? Single-family residences, it's a slippery slope.
No, no, where, where did we say that? Before we get on the skis, where do we get, where do we get off the lift?
It's, it's a slippery slope argument you're making. You know, it's, where does it end? I mean, Amazon trucks, what, what if Amazon goes, you know, gets, gets rid of the trucks and goes with drones? Are you going to require airstrips for, you know what I'm saying? It's a slippery slope. And all I'm saying is, it's a driveway, it's not a road. You want to treat it as a road.
My Amazon guy doesn't even drive up the driveway, so...
Yeah, but, I mean, the, the spec that you have here is a road spec, four inches of base material, right? The asphalt, you know, the vegetation, it's a road spec for a driveway. And so you're assuming that this driveway is becoming a road. So if it's, if you're assuming that the driveway is becoming a road, a private road or a private way, then subject it to the subdivision rules and regs for three or more. That's all I'm saying.
In order to be subjected to this bylaw though, it would not become your driveway, it's a shared driveway. It's a shared driveway. You're sharing it with two other people now.
Well, sharing it with possibly one other person.
Well, no, because that's permitted by a matter of right right now. You can have two off of one.
Exactly. Because that's the way we set it up. And the intent was never to go to three, four, five, or six homes off it, because we never wanted them developers to go around the subdivision regs.
Right now, they have that option to do it.
I disagree. I mean, I recall, and I have to see where it's somewhere, but I could have sworn it said that if there was some sort of an emergency or some sort of viability thing was the only reason why they could take it to the ZBA. I mean, again, I'm tapping a memory that's like 10, 15 years old.
I'm gonna have to do three that goes to the ZBA, right?
Yeah, right now, the way it's written, if you want to put more than two household, more than two houses on a common driveway, you gotta go to the ZBA for permission. The planning board can only approve up to two.
Yeah, but I think, I don't think it was in that part of the bylaw. I think it was... There's somewhere. I'll try to dig it up, but I thought that you had to have some sort of a reason where, for some reason, it wasn't feasible for three or more. Somewhere in there, in one of the regs, there is something with the ZBA.
You can have more than three. I mean, we had, I don't know if you remember, I think you were on the board when we did it, but the subdivision off of Dave's Way, they have a common driveway for all the houses that face 197, because they can't get out onto 197 without being in danger of causing an accident. So they put a common driveway along the back of those three or four houses over there, and they have a common driveway for three or four houses over there. I can't remember if it's three or four, but that was a common driveway, and they all use it. But it's paved. It's at least 12 feet wide, if not 16 feet wide. And there's a little turnaround at the end, so like if a fire truck or an ambulance went down, they could turn around and back up and get out. There's not a full cul-de-sac, but there's a turnaround.
I think at the end of the day, if you don't put a cap, and having shared driveways for just two is the max, you are opening up a Pandora's Box for developers one day down the road to circumvent your subdivision rules and regs.
It's very commonplace. I mean, if you take a ride through Sutton, you're gonna see all these common driveways where they actually have road signs at the end of them. They say it's a private way, and some of them have names, but they, most of them say "private way," and then they give you the numbers of the houses that are down there. And typically, it's four houses on each driveway.
But it's a private way.
And the way, the reason they're doing this...
It's a driveway.
The reason they're doing this is because the town of Sutton has a two-acre minimum building lot.
Yep.
So to put in four driveways on two-acre lots, you're talking a lot of material and a lot of work. So the developers cluster them together, four houses or three houses, and put in a common driveway, and they all share.
And when they do that, the town loses control of the drainage. I mean, there's this poor fellow who's kind of surrounded by this. I mean, God knows what's gonna happen once they start the land clearing and the excavation and the heavy equipment there. And then, so you have four or five houses on this shared driveway that was just given a permit. I mean, as the excavators and everybody go tearing up that, I mean, are they gonna sell this house first? This house, right? My understanding is, there's only two existing homes today, and they're gonna be building brand-new ones up there. So who's gonna incur the wear and tear of that private drive as they build, right? Is it gonna be the one person that buys that house? All I'm saying is, the Pandora's Box is open for developers to take advantage of the town and for the residents that are affected to lose their protection. Cap the shared driveway at two, and you don't even need this by law. If you go above three, then you need stuff like this, but you really need them under the subdivision rules and regs. That's all I'm saying. And, you know, if I don't see the change, I'm gonna try to defeat it again, because I don't want individuals, again, the original intent, two residences can share a driveway, whether it's your mother-in-law, father-in-law, kid, whatever it might be, town home. I mean, that was the intent when we passed it, and we passed the flag lot provisions as well. This, what's happening now, is a dangerous precedent with these developers going around. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Scott Zakowski, today I'm only one member of the Water Sewer Commission, but I read this today. I did see it earlier on the warrant, but there's something that's being left out. And maybe not in this West Dudley situation, but if it's inside the Water Sewer District, you've got underground utilities. Underground utilities have to be put in, one per household, from the main. You can't put a main on a private driveway, because it's private, who maintains it. So you've got an individual water line for each home. If they're in the sewer, that's an individual sewer line for each home. You get four or five houses on a shared driveway, now you're talking about 10 mains. The water in the sewer have to be maintained a certain distance away from each other. What's that?
10 feet.
10 feet. 10 feet between water and sewer. And then elevation changes as well. None of this is, I don't believe any of this has been considered. We've been, you know, with subdivisions, you know, we've been fighting to try to get more involved in the subdivision process, but with a shared driveway, the shut-off is at the road. That's it. And if that driveway's longer than 100 feet, they have to put a meter pit at the road. Because if there's a leak in that feed to the home, how is it ever detected? If it's before the meter, it would never be detected. It's on private property. We don't have a right to go after it. So there's a lot to be considered here that hasn't been. If you're going over, you know, two homes inside the Water Sewer District, that's four pipes with a 10-foot spread between the water and the sewer. And there has to be enough space in between the individual water lines and the individual sewer lines for maintenance if it's ever needed, if you have to dig them up. We ran into this with the three houses on Mason Road, on the common driveway. They wanted to run a single line, and no, it'd have to be individual taps to the main.
All right. Those within the Water and Sewer District, though.
Well, the particular drive for this is not necessarily in the district, but if something is inside the district and they're gonna be tying to water and sewer, then it needs to be considered, and there's not gonna be enough room in a 16-foot driveway.
That might preclude it in terms of the expense within the district.
But I believe it should be considered.
When somebody comes to the Water and Sewer Board to get a permit for a water and sewer hookup on whether it's one house or two houses or three houses, regardless if they have a common driveway, don't your engineers explain to them how this has to be installed and put in? You're 10-foot apart and all this, the regulations that you have.
Right. Yeah, we do explain that to them. But the thing is, if they've already gotten permission to have a shared driveway, now they've got a... What it does is it starts pitting the departments against each other.
They're gonna be going after...
We need to start avoiding, try to avoid that as much as possible.
They're gonna be going after the water and sewer permits long before they go after a driveway permit.
That may be...
So what do you do with Mason Road? Then that's not 16 feet. That's only like 12 feet for that one that you were just talking about.
Right. I believe it's watered...
Did they tap the sewer as well?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know how much room there is in there, but I know it was one big hole that they had to dig in order to do it.
Right, but it was doable. It was done. It's been done. Without this bylaw in place, it's gonna be done anyway.
I'm just saying that you need to consider more than, you need to consider the underground utilities as well. It's just, so we're not, we don't end up pitting departments against each other. They get through the planning board, and then they come to us, and we've had a history of issues where things weren't caught, and then it ends up being a badminton game between the departments as to who's responsible for it.
Right, but I mean, like, typically, I mean, it's not typical that the water and sewer lines go under a driveway anyways.
If you've got a common driveway, it's gonna have to.
Why?
Where are you gonna put it?
Put it across your property line. My water and sewer doesn't enter, and I have 100-foot...
If you've got a common driveway and you've got houses up and back, you've gotta go, you've gotta get past the houses in the front.
The house, regardless of where the common driveway is, the lots that the houses are built on still have each 100-foot frontage. So you've got 100 feet of frontage to get your water and sewer line to your house.
Or more, Mr. Chairman, depending on where the zoning is.
Okay, that may very well be. If it's like Dave's Way, yeah, that, well, they're not on the district, but...
But you don't have to have, it's not typical that you would have your water and sewer lines going underneath your driveway. I mean, all the houses in my, I live in a little cul-de-sac. Every house has water and sewer, but it goes...
If a common driveway, as was said earlier, is used to, can be used to circumvent a subdivision. If it were a subdivision, the main would be going under the road. So that's what I'm looking at. And then on Mason Road, that's what they wanted to do. They wanted to run a main up the road and then tap each of the three houses off. But then who maintains the main? Because it's on private property. That's the issue. They have to have separate feeds to each house, and if it's more than 100 feet from the street, then they have to put a meter pit at the street. But those kind of things need to be considered in the planning regulations as well.
But I would say that that's your board's, Water and Sewers Board's jurisdiction in laying out those specifications and rules and regulations for the home builders or homeowners.
Okay. Okay, I thought we were trying to simplify for...
Because they still need the frontage, so...
I just don't think you would be putting, I don't think you would be putting utilities for two private houses on a common driveway, under a common driveway. It wouldn't make any sense to me.
That's what they try on Mason Road.
But they didn't get away with it, because they went to the Water and Sewer Board and they told them what they had to do.
They're under the common driveway, but they're separate.
It's the same thing with Board of Health, though, that they're putting in a septic or well.
Hey, I mean, they're just...
Yeah, but you do a national grid. They don't want somebody else's property.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll give you a perfect example. Like I said, reason for a common driveway, necessity for a common driveway, because the legal frontage for the lot has some other problem. Like on Mason Road, it was wetlands right up near the road, so they couldn't go across with the driveway. So if you can't make a crossing for a driveway across those wetlands, you're certainly not gonna make a crossing for a sewer line or a water line for the same reason. So then, that's why you could end up with a situation where they want to try and put both lines on the common driveway. You could probably fit enough for two houses. I think the problem, again, starts when we go above...
Two.
Two. On the, going back to that meeting where you guys had the discussion about this originally, the March 13th meeting, there was a discussion amongst the board members where it came up, why not cap it at three max? So you keep it as two allowed by right, as it is now, and if you want to get a third, then you have to go through special permit process, but three's the max. But then there was a discussion amongst board members that said, well, you were worried about that if you tighten the regulations too much, that it might be defeated at town meeting by adding, by making the regulations too tight. The problem is, what ended up happening is, in this draft of the new article, you actually made it quite a bit tighter, because the original, the current bylaw, which is available on the town website, under this section, item F just says, "One driveway can be used for two houses. Only by a special permit from the Board of Appeals can more than two houses use the same driveway." That's all it says for item F. Then it goes to item G. The new article, as drafted, actually, you've got item F, "One driveway can be used for two houses, only by special permit from, strike the Board of Appeals and add the Planning Board, can more than two houses use the same driveway." But then it goes on, "Shared driveways," doesn't say "shared driveways of three more," it just says "shared driveways," which means two or more. "Anybody sharing driveways shall meet the following design standards," and you added items one through nine, which is, I believe, what Mr. Brier was talking about, that now all of a sudden we're getting stricter, because we're talking about making, where it went from the March 13th discussion about, let's try and like make not too many changes. Matter of fact, Mr. Chairman, I believe you, at the end of that discussion, said, "Let's just go for the one change of changing the line that says that the Planning Board will make the determination for more than two driveways instead of the Board of Appeals." That was, my understanding, after that meeting was over, was that's the only change you guys were, because that's the baby step that you talked about, that should be able to get that by at town meeting, because you're not changing all these other requirements. So, you know, I understand, remember Mr. Durgan was talking about, but by right use, it is still gonna be by by right use, but now, even if it's just a common driveway for two lots, it's gonna have to meet items one through nine, because items one through nine was stuck in here under item F. So it is, this is quite a bit stricter than what was originally talked about on March 13th. That's...
Right, but the reason this came back up for reconsideration, for us to submit it again, was what Mr. Clark just talked about earlier. You know, it did pass, it just didn't have the supermajority. And his idea was, let's hold a public hearing, go through the reasons why we're doing this, and hopefully inform the public better as to why this is happening.
Mr. Chairman, I may add that the example, and I thought it was a very relevant example in terms of the five, if you will. You know, and again, the question was asked, if not five, then why not 10? Why not 20? And so on and so forth. Reaching some absurdity. And you mentioned earlier in your comments, an end, and this is what we're looking for is an end, if you will. Now, some of this is boilerplate. I mean, the grade of each driveway where it intersects a public way should not exceed 6%.
It's already in the regs.
What's that?
It's already in the regs.
Yeah, I mean, so what we've done is repeated it. I mean, we've not taken this and made it up out of whole cloth, and it's just, you know, our imagination, it's found its way onto the sheet of paper.
Yeah, if anything, it's redundant.
There are things, it's maybe redundant, but redundancy has a value in terms of maybe people will read it the first time, maybe miss it the first time, but get it the second time. So, and again, keep in mind that these things are not necessarily all in sequence as somebody's reading bylaws. Somehow, you know, there may be separation in here, so this keeps this thing somewhat consistent and contained, if you will, on that one document or that one page. I would be agreeable to some modification of this, to be honest with you. I think we need something. And I think Mr. Brier has spoken very eloquently of the fact that there are people out there, scrupulous or unscrupulous, who are willing and eager to take advantage of these opportunities. And I think we've left ourselves a big one here. And I'm not sure what a modification would look like, but I don't know if it's out of order, and it probably is, but I will propose, in fact, ask Mr. Brier to provide us with what he feels might be appropriate, and then we can look at that as a possibility or as an option. Otherwise, I think we have to go to town meeting and try to amend on the floor, and that's gonna get messy, to say the least.
Yeah, and at the very least, if you at least know...
That will only serve to confuse and get us nowhere.
If you at least know what amendment, what proposed amendment is coming from the public, that might be a way to be able to already stand behind it and say, "Well, this is something that we talked about at a public hearing and that we support, maybe." I don't know. I mean...
Well, I think, if I may, Mr. Chairman, and I may be overreaching on this a bit, but I think there is agreement that something, whatever that thing happens to be specifically, is needed in terms of a change, if you will.
Oh, absolutely.
And I think...
Current common driveway...
I think one element of the agreement, and I think you've spoken to this, is that this be under the purview of the Planning Board.
Yeah, I...
So building on that, I think we could cobble something together that we can get through at, proposed and have received, well-received or endorsed, if you will, at town meeting, without having to go to the floor with amendments and try to confuse the issue even further.
And while you're considering possible modification, what the Sewer Commissioner had said about cooperation between boards, I'm not quite sure what the harm would be in having a requirement that anybody coming forth with a two or more common driveway proposal doesn't get a sign-off by the... proposal doesn't get a sign-off by the Sewer Commission. Sewer and Water, by Sewer and Water. In other words, his whole point of.
They have to get that.
Don't, don't let them, don't let them do the A and R, get the common driveway approved by the Planning Board, and then go to Sewer and have Sewer tell them, you can't put three sewer mains on, you can't put one sewer main on there to serve three houses, and you can't put three sewer mains and three water mains separate on one driveway that wide, because you have to have them X amount of feet apart or whatever. What's the harm? You could even craft the language so that it specifically states, you could say, any, any common driveway on a public way that has public water and/or sewer shall require preapproval by the Water and Sewer Commissioners prior to granting of a permit.
Prior to coming before the Planning Board, is what you're saying?
Right. So that when you guys have somebody come before you and they say, hey, I want to put three houses on a common driveway, and you're trying to decide whether or not this is gonna work, one of the things you should know is you should know whether or not Sewer and Water said it would work. Because if Sewer and Water said, you can't do it, you can't put three lines there, and if it's all wetlands over here and you can't cross it there, that applicant should be able to know that ahead of time. And he may have already found that out if he went to Sewer and Water first. Right now, there's no requirement from the code, he's just gonna make an assumption.
Well, the individual is free to make any assumptions they care to make, obviously.
When you grant that A and R, that assumption gets.
The sequencing of things is, you know, who's on first, who's on second, we're Evan Costello here, in terms of who gets first dibs. I don't have any objection in terms of, maybe we could throw something in there as a line referencing Sewer and Water and suggesting that they, you know, include them, but they should have, at some point, have to include them anyway. Is it our duty to make sure that they've, you know, gone from first to second, to third to fourth?
Yeah.
I guess, is that, we want to take that on?
Yeah, there should be a checklist, because the other towns I deal with, you go to Conservation, you go to Water Department, everybody gets checked off.
There is a checklist, I saw, isn't there, Mr. Scram?
And then they come to the Planning Board.
Not that I've seen.
Right?
Not that we've seen, okay.
And so, you go to Open Gov and you see, all right, this is signed off, this is signed off, this is signed off, this is signed off, all right, you can accept that at the Planning Board meeting.
And if you don't have that checklist, if you don't have that checklist.
Yeah, then don't come to the Planning Board.
And you have no guideline for the applicant. The applicant just comes here and they go, all right, I want to do an A and R, and I'm gonna do a common driveway. And you guys go, all right, looks good, and you grant it, and then he goes and he records it at his expense, splits that into two lots, does the A and R, he thinks he's ready to go. Then he goes after the fact, after it's too late, already did the A and R, already wasted his money.
What is an A and R, approval not required, right?
Yeah, yeah, we've been down this road before. What's stamped on every A and R?
What is an A and R? Approval not required. I mean, that is self-defined.
What is stamped on every A and R? Every A and R is clearly stamped, that approval of this does not, does not mean it's a, it does not, it's a buildable lot.
Have we ever denied an A and R in your recollection? And what jurisdiction do we have to do so?
We've made modifications to A and Rs.
Made modifications, have we ever denied?
I'll tell you, we're talking about a very rare situation. Common driveways aren't that common. I don't even know why they call them common.
We started with a common situation, now we're talking about something else entirely. Before we get too far off track, I appreciate, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I want to thank the gentlemen that have been here this evening, it's valued input, and hopefully we can go forward with something that will pass at town meeting. And again, if we can at all avoid going through an amendment process at town meeting, I think that's, we and the Town of Dudley are better served by that, the Town of Dudley primarily.
Based on the list of articles I saw, it's gonna be a barn burner anyway, so.
Oh, we don't need any fires, the chief isn't here this evening.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think Steve hit an absolute home run. Simplicity is best, right? Keep it simple. So what if, instead of a very long article, you simply kept, one driveway can be used for two houses only. Only by special permit from the Planning Board can a third house use the same driveway. And then simply say, in no case can there be four or more. There's a compromise. And then you don't even need these other standards, because they're subject to the current driveway standards already, which, as you've already said, right, the 6% grade, right, the apron's already in the current driveway. And so you can get rid of all this, and then in the meantime, once you stop the bleeding and preventing any developer from doing this again, then you can really kind of hash it out and say, hey, really, do we even want common drives? Because the town got themselves into some big trouble years ago, when common drives all of a sudden became public ways, and then subdivisions were given off of public ways that weren't, you know, town-approved ways. And if you go to, right, this Superior Court will say, will define what a way actually is, and so at what point does a common drive serving five houses become a public way, even though it may not be publicly accepted? And then all of a sudden, you have subdivisions, right, it's a slippery slope, kill it. Do the, right, do the two, special permit for a third, go into the Planning Board. And then if you need to modify it down the road, you can do it. But I think what Steve said, and just keep it simple. Thank you.
Jeopardy. All right, Final Jeopardy. All right. Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure how that would work in terms of the wordsmithing of it, but I would suggest that we ask Mr. Brier if he would wordsmith that for us, so we have it on paper. I mean, I appreciate your words, but obviously some of them are out there in the atmosphere at this point. And I would make a motion, if it's appropriate, to modify this article as we've.
We gotta close the public hearing.
Yeah, we have to close the public hearing, but I'm just asking you if it would be appropriate to go ahead with making a modification and adopting some of the language, and again, the specifics still to be worked out with Mr. Brier, perhaps. And I would suspect, and I would hope that this would meet his approval at town meeting, because quite frankly, I think his discussion or his comments at town meeting were the death knell of what was previously proposed.
Mr. Chairman, I would only suggest we don't close the public hearing if you're proposing to make changes to this article.
Right.
To keep the hearing open.
So my motion is inappropriate at this time.
We have one more meeting before town meeting.
So we could, we could bring up the proposals.
So we could still work on this language at the next meeting and then close the hearing. You do have to make a recommendation to town meeting.
Right.
So I think you should keep it open, so you can work on this further if you, if you want to.
The only other thing I would ask is, Mr. Chairman, is maybe Mr. Watroba would propose to the Zoning Board of Appeals, if they would cosponsor, if we make adjustments or amendments or changes to this, that they cosponsor this at town meeting?
I could do that, sure, I'll bring it up at our next meeting, which I think is either make second or maybe.
All right. I mean, the more arrows we have in the quiver, the better we have a chance of getting something done.
Perhaps, your point is well-taken about having Mr. Brier.
I have many points well-taken, but thank you for that.
We could also ask the Water and Sewer Commission if they have some suggested language that we could consider at all.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing that I'm seeing that, that right now in our current one, under a, let's see, item number seven, the applicant shall submit proposed documents to the Highway Superintendent or Planning Board, as the case may be, demonstrating that through easements, restrictive covenants, or other appropriate legal devices, the maintenance, including snow removal, repair and liability for the shared driveway and all public utilities shall remain.
Perpetually.
Perpetually, the responsibility of the private parties and their successors and interest. So, I mean, that's the only point that we mentioned, public utilities with this driveway by law. But I was just gonna ask, like, we only have nine items here, Mr. Brier, and the only one that I keep hearing that you kind of have the heartburn, or maybe two that you have the heartburn with, is the width and the construction, like number four, where it says you have to have four inches of gravel placed over a properly-prepared road base, ingrated and compacted to drain from the crown of the driveway. You know, that seems to be like you're, something that you're, you're having heartburn with, but like, number one, are you upset with us limiting the length of a common driveway to 500 feet?
Yes.
Why?
Because it's arbitrary. I mean, if someone bought a nice piece of land and has a half a mile of a paved dirt road, why does the town care? Why do we care? So why put that restriction there?
Because when a fire truck or an ambulance has to go there.
You still drive on a dirt road up there? I mean, it's still, right, in order to get the driveway cut, it still has to pass through the building inspector, and he has to review everything.
It's the Highway Superintendent.
But, but, you know, in order to get the, you know, if it's a new construction, right, you still need the CO. I mean, I just think, when we start saying 500 feet, well, why not 400, why not 600? It's arbitrary number. Somebody just picked it.
Mr. Chairman, just for a point of clarification, the act, actually, the way it's written, it's not limiting the length of the driveways to 500 feet, it's limiting the length before they split. So I don't think that's a reasonable, all they're saying is, if you can have the common driveway go in, at some point, it splits off to go to the other houses. And what they're saying is, that you can't go more than 500 feet before you split. So you're limiting that first 500 feet to be in the shared driveway. That's all they're saying.
I mean, we limit cul-de-sacs to 600 feet. Why 600 feet?
Because they're under the Subdivision Control Act, right? And the cul-de-sac has a certain radius so that the fire truck can turn around, right? That's why we have the subdivision control rules and regs. And that's why anything over three homes should be subject to the subdivision, you know, you know, rules and regs, right? Your water sewer issue solved if you subject them to the, to the same standards under your subdivision regs, right? Because at the end of the day, when a subdivision plan comes in, right, you're gonna have them dry piped to the water sewer, or they're gonna actually tie in, and you're, you're gonna be the governing authority, the regulatory authority on that, to make sure it's done properly. With a shared driveway, again, it's a driveway, it's not a road, and you don't want to make it a road, because, again, using the slippery slope down the road, it's gonna come back, and at what point does that driveway become a way? So that someone can get a subdivision plan off of this way, even though it's not publicly accepted? And then we get problems. So I'll, I know Scott very well, I have Steve's, I'm gonna try to get something turned around in the next 24 hours to you, all right? And just real simple, that I think will fly. Again, you know, you're, you have all the grading and stuff in the current curb cut and driveway specs. So, you know, let's stop the bleeding, let's get something that just buys time, so we can really think this through down the road. Is that fair?
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you very much. It's, we have public hearings and we have little to no attendance on many occasions. It's quite commendable to have this level of participation. Thank you again.
Continue the public hearing to our next meeting.
Right.
Seven.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, do we have to vote on continuation?
Yes.
Okay, so can we get a motion to, Mr.?
Make a motion to continue the public hearing to our next meeting on?
May 8th.
May 2nd.
We have a motion by Mr. Chinaki and a second by Mr. Clark, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you.
And invite your gentlemen to come back again in May.
Is water and sewer on that A and R list? You know, we have the list of tax collection.
Checks, no.
You know, probably do that, too, add it to that list. I don't know what kind of process that is.
Again, the A and R is really just a land division.
Right.
Well, water and sewer is not everybody.
Right, that's true.
That five driveway came with an A and R, right?
What's that?
That five driveway people came with an A and R plan to us first, before they went to the CBA.
Right, they needed to do both.
Right, but they're not using water and sewer, they're all wells and separate, so.
If it wasn't the district.
Okay. All right, so we're gonna have a continuation of the public hearing. Next item on our agenda, approval of minutes from April 10th.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that we table that. The, my guilt is apparent, I was late in looking at those minutes. There's a lot there to unpack. I would appreciate it if we could table that for the time being and bring that up for reconsideration in May.
Okay, no problem, we're gonna, we're gonna table the meeting.
And that's no reflection on Orr, she does a commendable job in terms of our minutes.
The only thing I was gonna say is that at the last meeting, we approved the meeting minutes from March 13th. The meeting minutes from March 13th that were sent out to us were the complete minutes, but the minutes that we signed off at the last meeting for March 13th were incomplete. So we would like to ask that we sign off the March 13th meeting minutes again, because they were incomplete on the.
And those would be, if you would, oh, you have copies here.
Yeah, they're right here.
Thank you.
So if you want to just take a look at them again.
We have two copies, all right, we'll approve them.
The one that Orr emailed us?
Yeah, they're already approved, they were just, when we signed off on them, we signed off on an incomplete copy.
Gotcha.
So we're just re-signing them.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, Richard's motion to table the minutes of the last meeting, was there a second?
I second.
No, you made the motion. Sorry, second, yeah.
All right, get second copy.
Yeah. Tom, can we get that one back?
Tom, that's yours.
There's not enough signatures on that.
Okay, that's yours, okay.
Go. Okay, I'll take care of that. Next item on our agenda, A and R plan, Depot Road LLC, Pearpon Estates, revision of recently approved plan to show new parcel to transfer between adjoining lots.
Mr. Chairman, I got a call from Attorney Security today, he asked to withdraw that A and R plan.
To withdraw that?
To withdraw for tonight.
Okay, so he'll bring it back at another day?
He may, he may not, he's not sure.
Okay, so this was the one that?
Approved.
That we approved, because it was like a half acre lot that was gonna be going to a butter. He was holding on to that because he may, he may have needed it for septic systems?
Right.
Okay. All right. Okay, that moves us up to standard business. Number one, discussion status report on finishing construction of and acceptance of uncompleted, unaccepted subdivision streets, including Pearpon Estates, Arky Hill Estates, Country View Estates, Eisenhower Drive, Tobin Farms Estates, Lyons Estates, Sophie's Way.
I don't have any new information.
On any of those? When were we gonna invite the people from Eisenhower Drive to a meeting to discuss what the situation is there?
I still intend to do that, I'm waiting to get the cost estimates for the road improvements.
Okay.
So Jeff Walsh is supposed to walk the street with the Highway Superintendent.
Okay, so we don't have that.
And identify what work is incomplete.
It would be good to have that, too, because then we can let them know what they're in for.
Once we know the total cost, I think, then we can go to the residents and say, this is what each house would be.
And if we can have that, if they, if we can have them come in on a night that we don't have a public hearing, that would also be good.
Right. I do think it's a good idea for the board to invite them into a meeting to talk about it.
Right, okay, thank you.
What was the, what was up with the Tobin Farms Betterment? They got their Betterment passed and everything, right? What's the holdup there?
Again, we're waiting for Graves to put together a bid package. So we've got to bid for that work.
Do you think that will happen this year?
Well, the lady was telling me she was hoping it was gonna happen this year.
Yeah, I'm hoping it is, too.
I know, they weren't happy.
Yeah, I don't know why it's been delayed, but we just haven't, it hasn't gone up to bid.
I mean, we've had a change of highway superintendents, and weren't they, wasn't the highway superintendent involved in getting the bids put out?
We needed the engineer from Graves to prepare the scope of work.
Okay.
And then we were jointly put it up to bid.
Okay.
I believe there's still some availability at Mr. Murray's times. I think he's still somewhat in the game, although not officially so.
I don't know if there's any arrangement like that, but he's available by phone for, you know, if we need to talk to him.
I don't think so.
Okay. I thought he was, had some...
He works for Oxford now, I thought.
What, you mean the town of Notre?
Our old highway?
Yeah.
Yeah, he works for Oxford now.
Oxford now, but I thought he had, he was doing some work or still advising or...
I know.
Assistant building inspector still.
Oh, still a building inspector?
Assistant building inspector.
Okay.
So does Graves know that they're working on this? Because that's been a while.
Yeah, I'll remind them again.
I talked to a lady. She was wondering what the hell was going on.
Okay.
Next, we have inspections and actions associated with site plans. Legacy Landing Country Club Acres, SEP Solar Oxford Avenue, JD&amp;D 24 Oxford Avenue, Stevens Mill, and the solar project at the landfill. Any updates on that?
Yeah.
We did, at our last meeting, we did get an update from the solar...
Yes.
Field. So we did have, yeah, we did have a written response from the, from that engineer, but there, on that written response, I don't remember seeing anything about like a completion date.
About a what?
A completion date.
Correct.
So we still don't know when that will be completed.
We did have, you know, an approval period tied to the site plan, which I think is coming up soon.
Okay.
So I will check.
So we might have to see if there's an extension.
I need to do an extension.
Extension, okay.
Been in touch with the engineer about that.
Okay.
To let him know that if it's not done, he would have to submit a request for an extension.
Reapply.
Yeah.
Okay. Number three, we have planners' plate. Do you have anything, Bill?
Just a couple of things. The parking lot improvements at the Dudley Housing Authority.
Yeah, Joshua, please.
Site plan on. It's going to be a pre-construction conference on Friday.
Okay.
So they're finally getting ready to start work. So Peter Quinn, who was the engineer on the peer review, will attend that and, you know, make sure that the ground rules are laid out for how the work will take place.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I know it's late in the game, and this thing is probably pretty much buttoned up, but there was a concern or a question was raised in terms of EV charging facilities at that location. And I don't know, it's probably too late to get any consideration of that on the table, but it seems like an opportunity missed as far as that's concerned.
Well, the work's being paid for by the state, through, you know, state authorities, so the state is funding the project and...
Is there any chance that the state may impose some requirement with regards to that?
No. John Marcy is a senator.
No, until 2035, right? That's when they banned the sale of gasoline engines?
Right.
So...
Well, if the infrastructure isn't there, we're going to be running around looking for batteries.
A couple of other things. We did send a letter to the Board of Selectmen on the Complete Streets program that I drafted and Guy approved and signed, so it's been sent to them. So I was just following up from the discussion at the last meeting to let the board know you want to be involved in complete streets types of projects.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I saw the letter. I think there were two questions that the letter did not address. Maybe the selectmen will speak to them. One of them was the comment, no, the pronouncement, rather, by the town administrator on 311 that the Complete Streets Committee's work was finished. The town administrator, when asked further to elaborate on that, did not do so. I think we need an answer to that. I think also our charter, if you will, our policy is one that was agreed to by the Board of Selectmen and signed by the Chair of the Board of Selectmen, not by the town administrator. I don't know what his authority is with regards to our committee, and I think that is a question that needs to be addressed as well. I do note that he made that pronouncement, if you will, and no one on the Board of Selectmen raised a question, an issue, or an eyebrow with regards to whether he had authority to do so or whether that authority resides. But we, I don't think have addressed those two questions, and I think those questions should and need to be answered.
Well, I don't think the selectmen's silence on that question indicates they're trying to disband the planning board as the Complete Streets Committee.
Silence is compliance.
And I think the letter that we sent indicates your desire to continue in that role. And I think it would be up to the Board of Selectmen to tell you otherwise. And they haven't indicated any willingness to do so at this point.
My thought would be, let's see what the response is, if we get a response.
Well, you're on record now, you know, saying, hey, don't, you know...
Don't forget about us.
Don't forget about the planning board.
Yeah, we're here.
Right. Another, another planner's plate item is that the Open Space and Recreation Plan has been completed.
Okay.
In the process of being loaded up on the town website. So you or anybody else will be able to look at it and download it and read it, hopefully, and take action on some of the items in the action plan.
Mr. Chairman, to the planner, one of the Open Space and Recreation Committee and some of these other committees that exist, and I thought that the intent eventually was to update the master plan, which is mentioned earlier, dates back to the year 2000, and in many places, in many cases relies on census data from 1990, 30-something years ago. Where does that stand in terms of the town hall? Is there, are we working towards that at some point? Do we have an end date in mind? I know, from what I understand, this is not an inexpensive process. There's resources that will be required to get it done. And hopefully, there's some momentum other than any that might be coming from us. And obviously, the planning board, I would think, with the consent of the town administrator, might have a role to play.
So it's in the capital plan. We'll be able to get $100,000 into the capital plan for the master plan, but it hasn't gone past that stage at this point. So if the planning board wanted to start working on the plan, you know, we would need to develop an approach, a strategy, in order to get that done. And that would mean, you know, finding grant funding for it. And, you know, either going with the Satch Mast Regional Planning Commission, who has done a lot of work for the town, or soliciting other firms to do that kind of work.
When does the current, is there a date or a deadline that when the current master plan just becomes obsolete or expires?
No.
State law requires you to have one. It doesn't say that it has to be current or it has to be within any period of time. It's just, it could be 19th century for that.
Are we in, are we in, are we in the majority or the minority of other towns?
No, most towns have an upgraded one.
Well, most towns have done, have done work on the master plan.
Right, so we're, we're behind.
One of the oldest, probably.
We're behind.
They're not cheap, from what I've seen.
I mean, if you deal with a private firm in order to put this together, maybe the partnership with CMRPC might help us somewhat with regards to the cost involved. But if you go to a public firm or sort of a private firm, if you will, you're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars for these things.
So you said that there's $100,000 set aside. Is that, would that be enough if we use CMRPC to do the master plan? Is that enough money?
Well, it's in the capital plan, but it's not been appropriated.
Right.
So you don't have the money, you don't have $100,000 sitting around. You'd have to, you know, go to town meeting for the appropriation.
Right, but is $100,000 in the ballpark, $100,000 in the ballpark? Or do we need double that?
Most cost more than that.
So we would want...
Whether you could do that for Dudley, you know, it's not a really complicated town. There's been a lot of studies that have been done in the meantime about, you know, water and sewer systems and the open space plan, and economic development plans have been done. So you're not starting from scratch and doing a complete master plan.
I compliment the town planner because he's shepherded through some of these different committees and put them together and put things in place such that I think they're, again, it's a cobbling of all this together, putting it together in some meaningful way or, you know, responsible way, that that's no mean task in its own right, certainly, but I think the pieces are there, some pieces are there.
So you think it's, you think it's wise for us to approach at least the Board of Selectmen this year and let them know that this is something that has to happen sooner rather than later?
Sure. Yeah, I think they would support it. But the funding, of course, is a problem with so many other needs in town.
Right, but if you have a, if you, I think, an up-to-date master plan is something that's relatively important. If you're going for grants and things like that, they look at that to see, like, what do you have? I mean, if you have a 25-year-old master plan, they may not, they may not grant you a grant for, for something that you desperately need because you're, you're not keeping up your master plan.
Right.
So I mean, I think we got to, you know, let them know that this is important and that it gets, you know, it gets funded.
I think it's a good work item for the planning board, you know, to pursue that.
Yeah, I mean, like, if we, I think we should, like, set a goal that this happens in the next three years. And let the Board of Selectmen know that, that it needs to happen. So that $100,000 needs to get appropriated, and if we end up needing $150,000, then we got to get it somewheres.
What, I'm just curious, Mr. Chairman, in terms of, maybe the planner would have some thoughts on this, would it be advisable, perhaps, to approach CMRPC in terms of asking for their expertise in terms of first step, the second step, and so on and so forth? And then maybe making those part of our agendas going forward?
Yeah.
You know, first step being the beginning of a long trail here, getting it started.
Well, I think if we could, I think if we could get them, you know, to give us a ballpark estimate, you know, just, you know, $100,000 doesn't, it's a nice round number, but it may not be enough. $200,000 may be too much, but if they could say, like, you know, they would be comfortable if we had $150,000 in reserve, you know?
Well, again, that would be part of the first step, just somewhat.
Just so we can have an idea, because I think we need to, we need to explain that to the Board of Selectmen. I mean, like, if we're going to, I would imagine at some point in time in the near future, we're going to go back to the voting polls for an override of some sort. I mean, $150,000 for a town is not a big deal compared to what we've already voted in. And if we need this, then it would be a good thing to get on the docket rather than just waiting, because I don't think it's going to happen if, if we don't push it.
I know you're on the, a delegate to the CMRPC.
Yeah.
Can you talk about work that they've done in other towns? I think they've done master plans for other towns.
They have been involved, and I think that actually, I can't quote numbers here, but from what I've seen, working with them is a cost savings town as opposed to, again, going to a private entity and having them do it. But, and I'm sure that they would, they've experienced enough with this so that we would certainly get what we needed in terms of necessities anyway. I think the other guys tend to have a lot of glitz and glamour and a lot of frills, which, which, you know, obviously can sell well in terms of, you know, presentation, but don't substantially change the document.
Okay.
But that's a good point.
Yeah. Anything else on the planner's plate? Comments from the planning board?
Just again, thank you to the gentlemen who were here this evening. And hopefully, we can get something. And I think there was, again, was some sort of agreement that something, again, somewhat nebulous at this point, but something has to be done and should be done. And I appreciate Mr. Brier's remarks with regards to those who are out there looking to take advantage of these things, because if we don't tighten this up, those opportunities are still there and will be taken advantage of.
Okay, anything else? Comments from the audience?
Ah, Mr. Wutrowa.
Just one last thing, a little bit, and on a positive note. I had the pleasure of speaking to a young man who's been working out at the Stevens Linen Mill, cleaning out that facility. He's got a monumental task. He seems to be working alone, but he's got 40 cubic yard roll-off dumpsters at that door. And when I went over there that day, he was really busy filling it up, and he had told me that was like the fourth or fifth one already. So, you know, some progress, not, not exactly a lot, but something's going on there. They're cleaning it out, because most of the material that's in there that's being